Oh, yours right there.
All right, good evening, everybody. At this time, if you're able to rise, please do so for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome, everybody, to a special evening. Typically, tonight, we celebrate the staff that's earned tenure. But before we do that, tonight, we're able to present three very hard-working diligent employees who love their job, and we love what they do. When Kim Furnish brought this to us last year about Employee of the Month, we all jumped on this. We thought this was a fantastic idea. We had several applications that came over. I want to thank Chad and Kathy for working on the tedious application online process. So, thank you both. And before we get to our tenure reception, I'll turn it over to Ms. Furnish for the Employee of the Month.
Great, thank you. On behalf of the Scotia Glenville Central School District Board of Education, it is my distinct honor to recognize Wayne Mizlinski, Christopher Horniak, and Zach Carey as the very first recipients of the Charlton Employee of the Month Award. Your unwavering hard work, dedication, and commitment to maintaining Scotia Glenville High School facilities has not gone unnoticed, and you're a vital part of our school's success. The person who nominated you said, "These three employees always go above and beyond their already tough job of keeping a high school filled with hundreds of students, teachers, and staff clean. And in a time when we know their numbers have decreased for budgetary reasons, they have not complained and still do all the extras to help out our extracurricular programs and the PTSA." As the nominator stated, Wayne, Christopher, and Zach, your efforts go far beyond the typical responsibilities of a custodian. You ensure that every student, teacher, and visitor experience a clean, safe, and welcoming space for our students to learn. It is a testament to your exceptional work of this outstanding team that you were chosen as our first recipients of this award. Your diligence, often working behind the scenes, directly impacts the daily lives of everyone within the high school community. You are a cornerstone of our operations, and your dedication is a shining example to us all. This award is a symbol of our deep appreciation for your consistent effort and unwavering commitment. We recognize that maintaining a large high school requires immense dedication, both physically and mentally, and your contributions are invaluable. Wayne, Christopher, and Zach, thank you for your exemplary service. We are proud to have you as a part of the Scotiast Glenville family. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition.
We can call your name if you want, if you will.
Kirsty?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. I'm not Kirsty, sorry. Kirsty Rosa, I'm sixth grade ELA at Wood School.
Kristen Badis, I'm art teacher in middle school and high school. My husband's side of the town.
Hi, Amanda Martin, SAC. I'm a reading teacher, and I brought my boyfriend Manny, my mom, retired SAC teacher in lab readings, and best friend Laura Daley.
Hi, I'm Doug Davis, elementary teacher at Wood. I'm feeling pretty bad now, I teach kindergarten and middle.
Hannah Matts, I teach seventh grade in Wood.
Tricia, I'm third grade at Wood.
Melissa Malone, I'm a therapist at Longmore.
Megan Carroll, fourth grade at Wood.
Well, thank you, everybody, and congratulations again. I like to see that mighty Cardinal group sitting back there together, so, good job. At this point, we do have some goodies out back, so it'll take five minutes or so to sit and chat amongst each other, and then, unfortunately, we do have a board meeting we have to get to after that.
All right, we're ready. All right, congratulations, everybody again. And as we move on here with our regular business meeting. Wow, I'm not used to this microphone right in my face. I'll open up the first hearing and privilege of the floor. If anybody would like to address the board, we've allotted 30 minutes' time. If you would, please just head to the podium. Name, address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Jason McCord, 1011 Cherokee Road. I'm the proud father of a Glenn Warden B. First, let me just say I can't say enough great things about that school. Their faculty, the staff, the PTA, thank you Chad for all the opportunities you've created for students. Principal has done an outstanding job taking over for Mr. Stables and stuff passing. You can really see her leadership skills and her communication skills are fantastic. And their first full year now, it's just great to see. I also want to thank you, the Board of Education. I've worked in school communications for about 20 years. And I've worked closely with many school districts, boards of education, superintendents. And I know how thankless your job can be. You often get blamed for things that aren't your fault, that are outside your control. So, thank you all for stepping up, serving your community in this difficult time. So, why make it, just quickly. I'm here tonight to offer suggestion, hopefully, for the board regarding the district initiative to close a school. I've heard Superintendent Schwartz mentioned several times that the board will decide what school to close. And if I'm mistaken about that, I apologize. But if I'm not, I just want to share that based on my experience, that's not usually how I've seen districts make big decisions like this. Typically, the superintendent would make a recommendation to the board. The board, they can, they should ask questions. You could even disagree with the decision, ask for other options. But the decision is not usually left to the board to make because the superintendent is in the best position to make a recommendation. She's essentially the CEO of the district, to your credit. She knows the schools, the faculty, the staff, ultimately what is best for our students educationally. I think of the analogy like when Ford had to close a plant, they wouldn't tell their board, okay, what plant do we close? They would make a recommendation. I think the same thing should happen here. And again, if I'm mistaken, I apologize. The reason I'm mentioning this tonight is I'm kind of concerned that the board is going to be the bad guys in a few months. When I think parents, faculty, and staff are going to fill this room and ask why you're closing their school. And my daughter's opened house recently, which was wonderful. A parent asked about the school closing. And another parent told everyone that she heard the only way to save their school was to go to board meetings and make as much noise as possible. That's what's going to come to you guys in a few months, four or five months, very quickly. So, I think it would be great if superintendent could make a recommendation about that. About which school to close. We need a united, I don't want to say front because that makes it sound adversarial, but everyone's got to be together. And I just want to make sure that the board isn't left out or they're getting all the flak. Kind of what, it felt like the budget last year was a lot of criticism of you guys saying, you're the ones who went over the cap, and I don't think that was fair to you. And I just want to make sure that we look like we're going down that road and I want to make sure of that. So, thank you so much. Congratulations to everybody tonight, it was a wonderful ceremony. Thank you.
Great, Jason, thank you.
Hey, I'm Amy Marlet, 1156 Moakup. Want to talk to you tonight, not about the budget and not about closing a school. I'll take a deep breath. The Pavilion, or the, excuse me, the Outdoor Learning Center at Glendale. I love Glendale just as much as everybody else. Right now, we are in a place of change, an absolute change in Scotia Glenville. We're closing a school, as it was just spoken to. That's the path we're going down, or we won't have another budget deficit that we had last year. Glendale is stepping up and saying, hey, our student council wants to make an outdoor learning center for our population. Glendale is the most, is the socially-economic advantageous school in our district, out of our elementary schools. And we're going to build an outdoor learning center that only they can access. That's great. What about the kids at the other schools? What about the kids that are being displaced from whatever school we clubs? Where's SAC's outdoor learning center? What are we doing there? It's just building this Pavilion and this outdoor learning center and not giving access to all the children is just deepening the inequity of the schools. You say, one tart and every thread matters. We're wrapping one thread in platinum, titanium, where everybody else is in straw. It's not fair. The kids in SAC, the kids in Lincoln, the kids in Glenville, deserve an outdoor learning center just as much as the kids at Glendale. I understand there's no school funding going into this, I get it. They're going to have grownups write checks and Roto-Read write checks and everybody else write a check for the $20,000. Couldn't we do something that all kids could benefit for? Could we wait till we close a school and maybe have some collaboration with all three elementary schools at that point? We can't even get a student council in all three elementary schools. We can't even get equity there. SAC doesn't have a student council. The kids don't get that opportunity. I just think about that for you both tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, if there's no one else, I'll close the first hearing and privilege of the floor. Remind everyone, we do have part two at the end of the meeting. At this point, I will turn it over to Superintendent Schwartz for her comments.
Thank you. There have been some questions around our reading program and the science of reading and what we are doing. Chad Roberts was kind enough to ask several questions after Mr. Kent has put together a memo for us. And tonight, I'm going to ask, rather than me speak, Rick is going to speak about where we are, what we do.
Sure, thank you. There's been a number of questions at board meetings regarding our elementary ELA program. I fielded questions for parents and some staff members, so I know it's top of mind for a number of our community members. I did create a memo for the board that I'll summarize for you briefly. Our intent is to undergo a full elementary ELA program review next school year for the 2026-27 school year. Why next year? Well, this year, we just named Marissa Gordon our K-12 Head of Humanities. Before Marissa can make a judgment on her ELA program, she has to get her feet under her at the elementary level. So, she needs some time to become more knowledgeable in the program. We also have a lot of new initiatives and programs that are set to take place this school year at the elementary level. We have a new student management system. All of our elementary teams have new SMARTboards, we'll have them by January 1st. We have a new report card at the elementary level, we have a new benchmark program, iReady. And we have a new character ed program that we're rolling out next month called Second Step. So, our elementary team, their plates are pretty full this year. And if you want to do a program review right, you have to create time and space for it. And we'll do that next year, it'll be a priority, it'll be a district priority to create time and space for our ELA committee to meet, review our current program, and compare it to alternatives that are out there, and there are a number of them. The committee will be led by Mrs. Gordon, Mrs. Federico, or our former ELA Chairperson for Elementary. She'll assist Mrs. Gordon. And our ELA committee is comprised 100% of staff. So, each building is represented, each grade level is represented. So, they'll meet throughout the school year next year and put together a pretty comprehensive report as to what we think might be the best step forward with our ELA program. So, I'd expect to have updates for you throughout the year next year and hopefully something more formal by the end of next school year.
Awesome, thank you. Anyone have any questions for us? Thank you, sir. Susan, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, moving on to our reports update. Kim Furnish, Legislative?
Yes. First off, the Regents last month voted for tougher high school dual enrollment standards. And that is for high school students who take classes here at the high school that also they can receive college credits for them. Mostly at Skidnaugby County Community College, but we also have it with Syracuse for a few as well. Those are all going to be coming under review by the Regents, not just for us, but for every school district. The Department of Education had been concerned that they may not be having, high school students may not be having the same content as those students that are taking the same classes but through the college itself. So, they want to make sure that the college course catalog and deals with it appropriately. And this actually involves 33 colleges in the state. And of those 33 colleges in state, 30% are actually high school students. So, they voted on 9/8 to bring it forward. There's a 60-day public comment period which ends November 8th. And they're expected to vote to make it to be a permanent change in their January 2026 meeting. And the effective date's going to be January 28th. So, starting with our spring semester with those classes, there's going to be a much stronger review. I don't know the particulars of the review, I'm assuming you will be getting them and know how to handle them. So, that was a big thing I saw in the last, since the last time I spoke. Also, the government, federal government is closed. There may be some concern with respect to funding for the schools. I know that lunch programs still are going to be in place, so we don't have to worry, have any concern for there. And from everything I've read, I didn't see there was going to be too much of a difference at this point anyways. I'm assuming you guys are saying the same thing.
90 and special ed or type of files. Those should continue to flow to the state, to us.
So, that's all I had, thank you.
Jack, PTA?
Yeah, PTA Council, September's busy, October's busier. We're going to be meeting for the first time as a council on the 15th of this month, 6:00 PM at Lincoln. Our units are going to start having school pictures during this week, throughout the month. The high school PTSA on the 26th of September stocked the staff's fridge and lounge. Thank you to all the parents and families that donated that. They had success on their senior T-shirts for their parents. Spirit Ware is going to be available for the PTSA at football games and events like Holiday on the Ave. And they're going to be working on the Homecoming Dance together, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then middle school PTA on the 17th of this month will have their Zombie Bash, 5:45 for sixth graders and 7:15 for seventh and eighth. Lincoln's Trucker Treat is coming up on the 24th, 6:00 to 7:30. SAC's Monster Mash on the same date, 6:00 to 7:30 as well. Glendale's Harvest Fest is coming up on the 24th, 6:00. Founder's Day are going to have their first virtual meeting coming up on the 8th at 7:00 PM. Glenn Warden will be having their Trucker Treat on the 17th of this month, beginning at 6:00 PM. And they want to shout out their reigning fundraising champion Tanner Compton, who has since kindergarten earned enough money to buy a moderately priced used car. So, pretty impressive for a third grader, so shout out to him. And also, they want to thank Glenn Bill Rotary for their donation earlier we approved for the adaptive seating.
Excellent, thank you.
If I'm correct, middle school was looking for more volunteers for the Zombie Bash and for snacks, I believe, right? Sign up genius?
I'm trying to get that for them, but it sounds about right.
All right, thank you. Audit Committee, nothing new as we approved that last month, anything new, Drew?
The minutes are in the board pack, which Alan and Kim said was good.
Beautiful, thank you. Board of Education Policy Committee?
Right now, you'll see tonight, we've got some first readings and some other policies. We're wrapping up the work from last year with Kimmy and Pam. And then, once we get through that, we're going to be working on the appendices.
Beautiful, thank you. Board of Education Goals?
I did add a goal myself. I felt that as student interaction becomes more of a prevalent initiative for the Board of Education, I feel like the board should try to encourage a little bit more of an open, less mysterious presence among the student body, particularly in the middle school and high school. This is something I've always observed, since I knew that the Board of Education existed, was kind of this higher-up bureaucratic presence where I didn't really know anything about it and I didn't feel any connection. So, I'd like the Board of Education to communicate its purpose, communicate its resources that could be available to students, and how students can use the Board of Education for their own initiatives, with emphasis on how to use me and Cal Feinberg's role, the student representative. To dissect that, I believe that we should describe to students what kinds of feedback could be available to our jurisdiction, what we can help them with. I'd like to describe explicitly how these students can approach the Board of Education with these matters, whether it be right up front at that podium or through me and Cal Feinberg. And I'd like to communicate the role of student representatives, how they can aid in bringing student voices, either directly or indirectly to the Board of Education. Finally, I'd like to establish dedicated, easily accessible contacts for students to be able to connect with the board through. Again, whether it be through me and my secondary or through a dedicated member of this board, an adult also. I have some more specifics on how this meets the SMART outline in the document that we've all been using. And I would really appreciate questions, concerns, either right now or on that document in the future.
Beautiful, Michael, thank you. All right, has the rest of us looked at the document, updated it, put notes in?
I'm pretty happy with the communication goal. I know there's been some input here and there.
All right, one next meeting? Talk about that, okay.
Kim and I have still been working on the Pathways to Graduation through the Careers. And we were wondering if we could get maybe a January date, if possible, to be able to utilize the high school? What that would look like? Because from there, we can go ahead and build out the board.
I'll follow up on that.
All right, thank you. And then lastly, budget. Drew, any quick update tonight, or, no, not yet?
I have a fiscal projection probably in November for you.
Beautiful. Thank you. All right, moving on, if I get a motion, please, for item number eight?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the 2023-2024 School Year Financial Transparency Report, formerly known as Every Student Succeeds Act.
I'll second.
Thank you both, questions or comments on that?
Drew, thank you for the memo. Could you explain why there was a large increase from one year to the next?
One of the things is they, two new categories were captured. The school lunch and transportation were added into the mix that were previously, so that drives the base up that way. That was a big change.
Thank you.
Thank you. If nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain, so moved? If I get a motion in a second, please, for resolution number nine?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Resolution Capital Area Health Insurance Consortium Trust Agreement.
Thanks, Chad, in a second?
One second.
Thanks, Karen and Chad. Questions? Comments?
I have a couple. Could you explain, Drew, I know you did in the memo, but just, could you explain what changes are in this amendment agreement for the previous one?
Our bylaws require every five years, I'll look at the trust agreement. And we have an outside attorney that sits at every trust meeting. Tom Gleason is our attorney, Rich Riley. So, basically, it's just some language updates based on the changes of the membership. The big one is that New York State passed a law about letting small schools into consortiums. So, we incorporated into our bylaws if a school, a small school comes in under a certain enrollment, that they will have to pull with five other such districts to have one vote. So, it's almost like, we want to call it weighted average, or we call it the real election. A popular vote versus the...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Because we have 21 districts as large as Gilderwin, South Colony, East Greenbush, things like that, North Colony. And we want a small district coming in that has basically swayed...
Equal vote.
So, that was a unanimous decision, so we incorporate, that's the big change in the bylaws.
And this may be change rental to the agreement itself, but where did we end up on the number of districts who signed that agreement regarding the health insurance changes?
I think everybody except us with certain groups, or Hills had no one sign, I believe. I think there's only three or four districts that didn't get anybody to sign the Free Market Health Program.
And are we still able to do that if things change? Thank you, that's all I had.
Thanks, Kim. Anyone else have any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain, so moved? If I get a motion, please, and a second for resolution number 10?
Make a motion to approve the resolution determining the proposed action as a Type 2 action for purposes of the New York State Department of Quality Review Act for building and site improvements for said school district. I submit it.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Comments, questions on this?
I had a question for Drew, same that I asked Susan earlier. I see we have some involvement with the design group and such. What is our investment going to be exactly? I see that the line shares coming to us from Rotary and, I forget the other entity, but what's our investment on this?
So, basically, my time in construction, we both were, we didn't, you know, there's no charge, hard job. We gave a lot of time to this, but there's no line item expense to the general fund on this. The architects and engineers negotiated down to about $4,000. We have to submit plans and approval from SCP. It's going to go on their registry as a building, and it has to meet certain requirements. But the Rotary and the PTA, Student Council, I met with them several times. We had a written documentation of what the process was, and they're going to fund that, so.
And silly question, but if anyone else comes to us with $20,000 in proposal like this, we'll give them the same courtesy, the same that we treat this, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, if we approve this tonight, they can move forward with the project?
Yes, they'll submit it to the state for plans and stuff like that to get it approved. The, I think the Rotary does have a grant they're getting when they complete the project, so that's in place. And Ms. Case at the Glendale, she's all excited about the fundraising.
All right, and we're not upfronting any money and expecting to get paid back? It's literally not in our pocket at all?
Correct.
Student Council needs your approval tonight so they can work on their fundraising efforts. Their fundraising efforts.
Thank you both, good questions. Anything else, yes?
I have a comment. I'm kind of glad to see this. And me and Kimmy went to board conference two years ago. We saw that as a tool to, you know, engage kids. Instead of looking out the window all day, go outside, get some fresh air, good weather. Again, as mentioned before, early in school, again, and hopefully, there's people up there that have extra money somewhere. We put in all of our elementary schools and high school, even, even middle school. Hopefully, we see that. Again, I didn't speak much about it before, because obviously with budget constraint, you can't just give out money. Hopefully, this is a start to a more fundraising, to more money coming out of nowhere, I'm saying. So, I'd like to see more of this, more of this happening if possible, not just school, but out there.
Couple of years ago, I believe, the Girl Scouts, Susan from Sacandaga, and we got them involved with the architect to design a Gaga pit and put over the playground. And he actually came in free, showed the aerial, how it was going to lay in there. And then, our gentleman in building ground supervised the construction with the young ladies in the Gaga pits there. And that was a collaboration, no cost to the district. The girls brought the idea with the troop leader to me. We met with them, told them what the process was, and we brought it home. Those things do happen. Anytime students want to have discussion, always, it's probably the best part of the job.
We did do something similar to this at Sacandaga back when my son was at elementary school. So, we're talking a while ago with an outdoor area where the PTA fundraised to get picnic tables and the teachers could sign up to use it for their class. It was right outside the library. So, we have done this at other schools.
Anything else? Good conversation. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Or abstain?
I abstain for, because I'm on the Rotary Board for this.
All right, so moved. If I get a motion, please, for item number 11 for the Shared Services Agreement for Bus Maintenance?
I'd like to make them for the Shared Services Agreement for Bus Maintenance.
Thank you, Mike, in a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Questions, comments?
I have a question, or a comment, I guess. Drew, can you begin briefly, tell us how this benefits us collaborating with Burn Hills?
Five years ago, six years ago, we had to decommission our lift. The bus garage didn't meet safety requirements, so it would have cost a lot of money to retrofit that. So, we ended up going up to Niskiuna, as you remember, for that cooperative thing. Cuomo incentivized districts to penalty a loss of eight if you didn't do some collaboration. So, we did that, went up the hill, brought our buses up there. It worked out okay, but then I had the idea during COVID, we went over to Burn Hills, they're building this really nice facility. And so, I met with them and their transportation department, brought ours over. And hence, we brought to both our boards this five-year agreement, which has worked out well. The reason it benefits us, it has inventory controls through their inventory system. They have state-of-the-art lifts, state-of-the-art, you know, facility lighting tools, everything. So, they do our DOT work for us. We're still managing our bus drivers, managing our routes, that sort of thing. But it saves us from probably going out to the public for a $25, $30 million referendum to retrofit that facility, to bring the buses back for DOT work, hiring our own mechanics back and that sort of thing. So, we decided not to do it, which is the board's prerogative. You have to give me two years, because we have to basically put together a plan, do a public presentation, have a proposition on the ballot, and then pass it. So, between the time of getting it passed and planning to build, it'd be probably three years out. This is great because it's state-of-the-art facility. And you saw in my memo that I incorporated EV charging and bus washing, because they're finishing a brand-new bus wash. So, it allows us to negotiate with them to charge our buses should we need to and to wash our buses over there, because our bus wash is not state-of-the-art anymore. And they're receptive to it. Their board is really excited about continuing this. So, and I know our board was in favor, we talked with them this summer, so. We get eight on it, I showed you the net cost is $107,000. And our DOT rating has improved since we came down the hill. And our parks, we had a great audit from Questar. Wasn't so good when it was up the hill in Niskiuna. Much better parts management.
Drew, you said this is a five-year agreement. Is it year-to-year after this, or do we have to sign another five-year?
You can do whatever you want to do. We can discuss with Burn Hills at that point, to go annually, semi, whatever you want to do. This was, we thought, because it allows them to plan, because they have a workforce and things like that. It allows them to get their house in order to accommodate this. And I think it gives us some smooth, less things to worry about.
And we had another agreement with another entity, and it seems like this even saves us money from that one, prior to what we're doing here.
Absolutely. Hope that answers your questions.
Thanks, Drew.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Drew. All right, all in favor? Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved? If I get a motion, in a second, please, to approve the agreement?
I'll motion to approve the agreement.
Thank you, in a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Kim. Questions, comments?
I have been asked to speak on behalf of the board to advise that we are only voting for this agreement because based on the circumstances, we legally feel that that's the only option.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved? If I get a motion, in a second, please, for item number 13?
I'll motion to approve the memorandum of agreement by and between the Scotia Glenville Central School District and the Scotia Glenville Teachers Association, as stated.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Comments, questions on that one? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? So moved? If I get a motion, please, to approve the updated cellphone allowance, job title accordance with board policy, 8331, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated list of the cellphone allowance by... We'd like to make a motion to approve the updated list of the cellphone allowance by job title in accordance with Board of Education policy eight-three-three-one.
Thank you, Chad. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Greg, Chad. Anyone have any questions on that or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. Excuse me. If I get a motion, please, for item number fifteen?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated list of purchasing cards. The Home Depot, LendLoans, and Auteris issuance to employees has been.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you both. Uh, questions or comments on this? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion, please, for item number sixteen?
We'd like to make a motion to adopt updated Board of Education policies, number one-two-three-zero, number one-five-zero-zero, number two-one-two-zero-point-two, number two-one-six-zero-dash-R, number two-two-two-zero, number two-two-eight-one, number two-three-one-zero, number two-three-four-one, number two-three-six-zero, number six-two-five-two, and number eight-three-three-one, corrections for clerical errors and/or current practices.
Thank you, Chad. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Questions, comments on all those? Any of those?
I have a couple of questions. Um, with respect to policy twenty-one-twenty-point-two, why was the voting machine section removed?
I believe, um, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but Pam might correct us on it, um, because the voting machines are still used in some areas in some capacity, like, um, we still use a machine, we still use, like, um, computers, we still use all that stuff, so that was left in. But if you guys would like it taken out, then that's something we can pull out now and...
Well, I thought it was taken out. That's why I was asking.
It was still taken out, yeah.
Um, oh, 'cause it was a left.
So I wanted to know why it was taken out and not kept in?
Oh, backwards. Because it was, um, it's not the paper booth that we use anymore. It's electronic, and it was referring to the, um, pen and paper paper booth. As in the old days, it's electronic, so backwards.
Okay.
I thought you were asking why it was left in. That's what I was thinking.
No, no, sorry. And then with fifteen hundred, it said at the top that it was being reviewed by the business office. So has it been reviewed? Should we wait until they do their review?
Uh, Susan, has that been reviewed by the business office before it's put in?
I honestly don't know at this point.
Okay. So do you wanna pull that one out?
My guess is it has not. Oh.
I am.
It's not. It should be pulled out. Thank you.
It should be pulled out.
Okay.
Sorry.
What number was that?
Fifteen hundred. And then, um, with policy eight-three-three-one regarding the cell phones, there was a huge section taken out. Was that because there's that separate agreement that the staff and teachers have to sign with respect to cell phones?
I believe so.
I believe eight-three-three-one has, is more about who is having district support for a cellphone, um, as opposed to the current cellphone ban seven-two, um, during the school hours. So this is really your, the list that you just approved with the changes. This is the updated policy that reflects how we do them.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone have any other questions on any of those? All right, so we will vote.
We need to rephrase it.
Hang on, hang on. I, I get it. Um, so we're going to, uh, approve the motion excluding item fifteen hundred. Okay?
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved.
Kathy, when that gets, when fifteen hundred gets done, will you send it over to the new policy committee? Have them do it?
He'll go to this board.
This board?
Yeah.
What was that?
Mainly attorneys review.
Okay. Sorry, I'm deaf today.
That's okay. I want a mic.
All right, moving on. If I can get a motion, and a second, please, uh, for items seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, which have to do with first readings of three policies?
Make a motion to approve revised Board of Education policy for first reading, number two-one-one-zero, School More Powers and Duties, number two-two-four-zero, Board of Education, Superintended Relationship, number five-zero-two-zero, Eco Educational Opportunities, as submitted.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Uh, comments or questions on either of those three?
I have some questions.
Yep.
With respect to, um, twenty-two forty, there was a section in red regarding superintendent reporting, but then it was crossed out. Was that in red something NISP recommended, and but then why was it crossed out?
Our attorney recommended removing it. It's, uh, not required.
And then with respect to fifty-five, um, wait a minute, fifty-twenty, I guess. I thought it was fifty-five-twenty. I made my typings wrong. Um, to me, it doesn't read that it has all the protected classes in it. You're either under DASSA or the New York State Human Rights Law. It didn't have gender, it didn't have weight, it didn't have sex.
We can go back and ask the attorney to read through that again.
And that's all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, perfect. So since this is the first reading, we have the time to correct these. So we'll approve the first reading with corrections to that, and then we'll get the Board Policy fifty-twenty once the lawyers take care of that for us. All right. Any other questions or comments on those? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Excuse me. Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion, and a second, please, for resolution number twenty?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution, accept and establish the Dominic Pilowski Slight or Site Society of Northeastern New York Memorial Scholarship.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second it.
Questions? Comments?
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. Thanks. If I get a motion, please, for resolution number twenty-one?
I'll move to accept the gift and donation to the athletic department from the Scotia Glenville Booster Club in order to purchase new boys varsity soccer uniforms. With thanks.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion, please, for, uh, communications?
A motion with communications?
Uh, yeah, let's just stop there. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions on that one? All right, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. If I get a motion, please, for twenty-three A tenure, and then under B, we're going to move numbers two through thirteen, please?
A motion to, um, move tenure recommendations A-one and staffing two through thirteen, uh, and placement of children with disabilities.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions on those? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. And thank you. Congratulations again. Uh, now if I can get a motion, please, for twenty-three B-one, please?
A motion to move twenty-three B-one?
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Can furnish?
Yes, I've been asked, um, to speak on behalf of the board that the reason, the only reason we are voting for this is because based on the circumstances, we legally feel it's the only option.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. All right, uh, routine business. Uh, anyone have any questions about the Treasury report? So moved. If I get a motion, please, for twenty-four C, the minutes from the August eleventh twenty-five meeting and the September eighth twenty-five meeting, please?
With respect to the August eleventh twenty-five, I'd like one change under legislative regarding the presidential fitness test. It was back for all students, not just for, it's not, it has nothing to do with playing up to another, uh, to varsity. Um, so with that change, I would move to accept the August eleventh twenty-twenty-five and the September eighth twenty-twenty-five minutes.
Thank you. We'll move that change and have it done. And a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about that or comments besides that one? So we'll move this with the correction. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. Under other business, uh, can I get a motion, and a second, please, to approve the Audit Committee meeting minutes from September twenty-second twenty-twenty-five, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Audit Committee minutes from, uh, nine-twenty-two oh-five.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on that? Comments?
They looked accurate to you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. Any other, other business?
Uh, Rick got a question with the cellphone policy. Um, I know when we got into it, we were kinda looking at the five-oh-four and IEP possibilities. Is that anything that we've encountered yet? And if so, how are we navigating that?
I have to survey the principals to see if they've had any requests. Um, I think we did, um, communicate that if, if a student or a family was looking for an exemption, to reach out to the building principal.
Correct.
I do remember checking with PPS and, um, hearing back from them that there was no accommodations in an IEP about a cellphone, and so there really shouldn't be any IEP-connected exemptions. Um, could a student have a five-oh-four for, uh, diabetes? Need to have a cellphone on their person to monitor their blood, uh, insulin? Absolutely. So, uh, I think it's working through the principals. I can sort of survey them and, uh, report back to you through Susan.
Yeah, I was just curious. There was one of those things pops up. I've just seen how it played out.
Thank you. Yep.
Um, I had a few things. I'm sorry. Um, first off, I wanted to congratulate all our seniors where we've had senior nights. Um, we had it for field hockey. Um, we've had it for boy soccer. Tomorrow night, girl soccer and volleyball are having their senior nights. Um, and I know there's other ones coming around for the fall season as well. Um, golf had theirs last Friday, or Friday before last, I should say. Um, I just, just watching those kids have their senior nights and celebrate the end of a, a great high school career just is really inspiring to, to me. Um, I did wanna talk about the athletic code of conduct, because year before last, we had some issues that arose that showed that maybe there was some discrepancies with respect to how we were handling consequences in violation of the athletic code versus this during the day, school day code. And the board had asked about making changes to that, um, and that hasn't happened. It didn't happen last year, and I was looking at the Athletic Council minutes, and I know you've been working on the APP policy, and I'd love to hear about that. Um, but I really think we need to get that athletic code updated and, uh, and fixed to try to make sure that there's not that discrepancy anymore. Um, I would love to see that, that happen.
I can certainly relay that to, uh, Marcy and that team.
Thank you. And Carden, I know you were at the Athletic Council, um...
Yeah, good segue there. Um, I was at the council meeting last week, and we did go over the APP process, um, after initially things went down. Uh, Marcy was looking at, you know, discussion with the council, how we could get, not better, but make sure it's uniform throughout the state, is your bond, you know, the law to the T, per se. And we're still reviewing it. I believe she's gonna reach out to us September this week and waiting on a couple more suggestions or language that has to be, you know, properly worded. I did mention at the meeting to Marcy that the board has, for eagerly waiting, or not eagerly waiting, does, let us see what's been going on in past year, past year. Since the council's informed, so I believe she's working on that to bring us a presentation. So.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? All right, so this time I'll open up the second hearing and privilege of the floor, which we have thirty minutes allotted. If anyone would like to address the board, please just go to the podium, your name, address, and our five-minute policy, please.
Hello. My name's Christina Strajak. I reside at one-fourteen Sealy Street. I wasn't planning on coming until I watched, um, the two and a half, three minutes that Rick talked about, the curriculum and development plan for literacy with science of reading. So we have had this knowledge as teachers. I'm a part of the teachers' union of New York State. We have known about this for at least three years. Now we're gonna wait another year. This curriculum and development, um, head has been, from, from my understanding, has been in this position of curriculum and development from the upper grades, from seven through twelve. She needs another year to figure out if what we're doing is aligned, when we already know that it's not aligned with New York State standards. This is a New York State policy, so there is a little wiggle room that we can wait another year. It's not a law, so there's a little gray area. I'm not okay with gray area. Scotia has been falling behind. Other teachers are coming to me and saying, what is happening in your school district? What is going on that they're not using the science of reading? It's making us a laughingstock. We have quality and educators that have chosen to live here, that have children that are seven years old, up through high school, and we chose to be here. And we did so because we thought we were getting a quality education for our children, and we believed in this school district. And now we are falling behind even on normal policies and procedures that New York State is running. I have a really hard time keeping my children in this school district. It is taking everything in me to not pull my child and take them to Glover'sville, because they are so farther ahead than we are. It's disgusting. We are doing a disservice to our children and to our community members. The only reason my children are still here is because the community is so thick and helpful and uplifting for my children. They're in basketball. They're in lacrosse. They do all these things outside of extracurriculars, that their friends are here, and our parents are here. I know that my children are well-supported in that area, but their education is falling behind. That is the last thing that I thought thirteen years ago, when I bought a house on Sealy Street and saw these buildings down here. That was the last thing I thought that was coming, was that their education quality was gonna go downhill. We do not need another year. That is astronomical. Teachers don't need a year with their smartboards to figure out how to work them. That, I, I just don't even understand that. Smartboards, if you don't know, are basically giant iPads. They don't need a year with them to figure this out to see if they, they can handle new curriculum. This is appalling to me, and Rick, you've been here for a year and a half as the Curriculum and Development Assistant Superintendent. This is not something new. This is something all teachers knew, administration knew, that was coming from New York State. This is disgusting to me as a teacher, and I do not, do not have confidence anymore in their quality of education at Scotia Glenville, and it's very, very sad.
All right, if there's no one else, I wish to stress the board, we will close the second hearing and privilege of the floor and ask for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Anyone opposed? Or abstain? So moved. Thank you, everybody.